Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting has been properly noticed? I assume it is. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The meeting has been properly noticed.
Okay, there we go. Is there anybody here for community participation? Bob, you've got something to say tonight?
No.
Okay. Is there any item from the consent agenda that any board member would like be ruled for individual consideration? If there is none, a motion for the approval of the agenda would be in order.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Leah, second by Holly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and motion carried. Consent items are taken care of, I believe that takes us right down to Phase Two Construction Project.
Before we get into that, I just want to take, I think it's appropriate, tonight at the meeting, to just take a moment here before we get started with our business. Many of you may know that Gaylord Unbyhan passed away last night at 6:30. Gaylord was the superintendent of schools here from, I'm not sure exactly the years, I probably should look that up, but somewhere around 1960 to 1978 or so. He was a pillar of our community. He was involved in many things. He built, he was oversight of the construction of this room we're sitting in right now. And a big chunk of the school. And I think a lot of you knew him as an administrator, a lot of you knew him as a community member. And I just think we should just take, given all that he did for our school, I think we should just take a moment here of silence to just remember Gay for a moment briefly. And Gaylord would want us to get back on track with our business here right away. So, we'll run right into a Phase Two Construction Project, which Gay was a huge supporter of, our Phase Two, which we could be moving into. All right, we have a number of things to accomplish tonight that are left over from, I guess this is about the, this is the fourth meeting we've had since we've been dealing with this particular project. So, you could, yeah, I think you can just pass those down to those two guys. We have a couple of things to do here tonight. First of all, I think if you look, there is the addition and remodel schedule, and then there's the elementary STEM schedule. And so I think we need to just make sure that we are on board with and know the schedule of those two things. I believe you already approved this at our last meeting. So I just want us to kind of take a look at that. The only thing that we need to, well, let's go into the first part. Since the first part is the schedule here. If you want to take a look at the revised scope of the footprint, and then the description, we're not going to go through, actually there's an extra page in there that I messed up on the top of there. There's the first page is there twice. But you can see there's about forty different reductions that we did. And the footprint has been revised. The primary revisions of the footprint are, actually we'll pass these out to our guests. The, do you want more? Everybody got one, or are we needing one more? Not going to go through all forty of these because I know we did that partially last time, that was pretty painful because we put them here. So we'll avoid that. If you just look at the basic footprint, what the primary revisions are, if you look at it, is that the existing vestibule is going to be kept, which is the entrance on the far left there, which would be south. That, there's that existing entrance that is already, actually it's boarded up now because we took those doors out. But we'll basically kind of redo that. There's a lot of structural things there that we'd have to change, so we're not going to take that out, we're going to leave it. The corridor between the new offices and the gym, we talked last time quite extensively about leaving that. Long story short, that's not feasible, we really need to replace it. The office itself has been made smaller primarily through the reduction of a large boardroom. And that boardroom is going to be put over in the existing middle school office. That's conceptually. The office itself, there's a few things that we have to change from this footprint, so that's not exactly what it looks like. But that pretty much gives you a pretty much closer thing. And we reduced this scope by quite a bit. And then we're going to put that boardroom over there, which we thought would be feasible because that large of a boardroom isn't necessarily all the time during the day. And certainly having that extra entrance would be certainly something that would be feasible to use as a boardroom. So there's some reductions in square footage to the commons.
And what was the reduction?
The total square footage reduction in the whole project was about twenty-two hundred square feet. But the main thing of the cafeteria was kind of squaring it off. You can see the tables that are in there, that's what the existing cafeteria looks like. So you can see there is quite a bit of space. And we also designed a kitchen so that the serving area is kind of inside as opposed to outside, which gave us, we originally had room in the cafeteria for serving. So what we thought we would have for all the space for students is still going to be the same. It's just we kind of got rid of that serving area. So we made it a bit smaller, but you can see it's still pretty extensive. It does go beyond the front where it is. But that twenty-two hundred square feet did not all come out of the cap commons. Some of that did come out of the offices too by making them all a little smaller as well. And then when you look at the cost itself, the, what the basic project goal would be there, there would be alternates that would be put on. So for example, alternates would include the, the district office is basically just, is costed at a shell. We have to put that on as an alternate. There's some existing windows and also flooring that would be on there. But there would be some things, those would be put as alternates, but the base bid would be projected to be within budget. Any questions on that?
So basically, there's going to be like a joint office, that was always the way it was?
Yep, that part of it is the same. The only thing that's really different is there's a little bit of difference in the reconstruction of the, of the, well, the main thing is, is that we're leaving in that existing vestibule. We're not pushing it out all the way over. And that square footage is achieved by taking out the district office, I'm sorry, the boardroom.
So by taking the boardroom out of there, that gained you some square footage to put into the offices?
That gained us some cost reductions to make the whole footprint smaller. Yeah, we were able to, yeah.
Right, but you took the square foot, the square footage that was in the boardroom and you put that into the offices.
Well, right, but we made the whole, the whole piece is smaller too. So, yeah, so it's kind of old. And this, what you see for the office design is, there's a couple of things that need to be changed in here, but we're, but it gives us pretty much a working, a place to start and to go up to, to get those construction documents ready by January ninth.
There's one bathroom in there?
Yeah.
Is that different?
No, that was always the case, I believe, right by there, yeah. And that's just for the sick room, I mean, there are bathrooms, there's a whole lot of bathrooms here, 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 so there's kind of.
Meaning throughout the building is what you're saying?
Yeah, there's bathrooms here, there's bathrooms here, there's bathrooms here.
Like number thirty, so revising entry designs, is that how you wanted, you know, how you were asking about that?
So, yes.
Were they able to? I think it's, no, that was some of the big discussions, I guess.
Yes, that was the take, right, because that whole vestibule, it's actually reduced by quite a bit.
Okay, so it's not as, is it still going to stay main entrance, or you don't really know?
You know what, I got a.
I was just going to say, she promised us an elevation.
I do have that, I forgot to give, I just got, I got that later today and I forgot to run that off. I apologize, but I think I can pull it up if you want.
Well, because that's a day, I mean, it's sixty thousand, which is kind of what we're talking about here, so.
I hope you all, I'm trying to see if I can turn it on. I apologize, I just.
Oh, it's fine, no, I mean, it's, I don't need to, I was just going to, they were able to do that because she, uh, she was. I mean, I'm assuming with that corridor, how we talked about that, it ran the firewall, so that has to stay?
Yeah, that was.
Or it can't stay.
That is, that's, it's, what we had thought would work really won't. There were just too many structural things and firewall things that would, that would not be there.
So will there be windows in there, or is that part of it?
No, no, there will not. At least as this plan is drawn up. Now that, again, those types of details might evolve as we get into the project. You know, do you put a window here, there? But I think that on a whole, this gives you a conceptual thing. And I think as we look at the, the project list of the reductions, you know, we will certainly move forward by looking at, you know, some of these things will probably put as alternates to try to get in. But at least I think this will give us the project itself and a way to get it up and running. That was on the original one, that was the canopy here that went in the front.
Oh, okay.
Under that.
Does that eliminate all of it then?
Yeah, that pretty much does. Between that and the vestibule reduction. But, I mean, fundamentally, it still says, there's still a sign under the, but the tall thing is reduced. It's just basically a set of doors. No.
And then, but the window, the upper is an alternate, is that correct?
Upper.
The number twenty-six, the upper window, that's the ice for.
Yes, that would be what was above, yeah. So that natural lighting into the cafeteria itself.
And with leaving the other two entrances, are they going to be functional, or we're just leaving them as savings, or?
They'll be functional, but they'll be blocked.
So it's still just the ones that are.
Correct, yeah. So that piece stays the same, and you have to go through there in order to get into the school. And I, and I think, and that, I think has largely been with the, moving everything to the back, those entrances have, I think, we've kind of got a culture shift to go there. So I think we've got more of that. And I don't, do they, yeah, the, I mean, people come in the front during the day because the back is locked. And that would still be the case here, but it would just channel everything to one spot. Which is easy to do because we just keep the doors locked. And that's where, too, that's where everybody's going to have to go. Because everybody wants to come, when they come, they go to the offices. So it's not going to make sense to go anywhere else either. Which allows you to control the traffic during the day. Which was our goal for the project.
You got a picture of that?
I do, but it's not, it doesn't, it's not going.
Come on, you can take a look at it.
Here's the arrows. Sorry about that, I forgot to run that off.
Are those are the six windows that they're talking about?
Those are, no, those are, I believe, what this is talking about are around the top more. I think those just show some of them, but I think there would be more if we were to look at that as an alternate. It was, that wasn't a big dollar amount, it was under twenty thousand dollars. So it's something we could look at. It did not have the natural light, that's just, that's just not.
One of the reasons we moved it up.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, it doesn't look the worst. Well, I'm sure it'll look different with color.
Yeah, it's very similar to what.
It'd look different with color on it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's a far cry from what was originally. Right, with the.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's gone.
Okay. All right. So what do we want to see done here?
I think at this point, what we would need, is look for approval of this plan going forward. We will be working with Marley to get final construction documents done. Just so, because some of these things will need to talk with the, we want her to talk with the people who are using it. So she touched base with the principals and secretaries, just so she gets their input. Because some of this stuff will have to be moved. But it's just things that we can do to make sure that, okay, now that we've got the costs down, are there things we can do, change it with no cost? So moving to an office to a different place, or a door to a different place, stuff like that. There's, there's a few things on there because it's a kind of a basic thing to write, but just conceptually, you know, that's what it's going to look like. So you come in, you've got the main offices here, and the district office behind you. That's what we originally wanted, and we were able to get things to there.
So you need a motion to.
We would need a motion to approve.
I need a motion to approve the.
Right, for, I believe, to approve the plan for bidding.
To approve the plan for bidding. I second.
Okay, motion by Leah, second by Holly. Is there any further discussion? The ones, once again, the starred things are considered.
That's some of the things that she had, we might add a few more. But again, those are, those will just be as alternates and.
Meaning that something else would get.
No, meaning that we'll bid everything, but we'll ask for a price for these things from the contractor too. So if you get a bid back and it's, you know, it might allow you to do these things, or at least we'll know if we want to move forward with these things in some other way in the future. But it's not going to, you know, it's not going to, we're not going to, it, it, those will just be things that will probably be over. And you can decide which, if any, you want to add back in at the point you get the actual bids back.
Describe, and should, describe shell of the district office.
That means the district office, and this is not finished. So the, everything, there's kind of a darker black line if you look. And pretty much everything to the left of that, to the south of that. If you look within the offices, that will be left as a shell and then.
You mean, it kind of zig, it kind of comes up?
Yeah, if you look, see how it's a little bit darker?
Yeah, it kind of zigzag this way up?
Yeah, yeah, so it includes kind of the back corner, one office, and then where it says district office, office, district administrator office. So those kind of like, that, that space, which is about maybe a quarter of the whole office space there, that'll be put in as an alternate.
Meaning if bids come in low enough, it would be completed? If it does not, that'd be something that would have to be completed later?
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
All right, and so just back to, if you want to look at the schedule so we can know what we're doing. We would approve this in the last meeting, but, so the construction, the bidding will go out starting January twelfth. And will run through February fifth. And so we'll be looking at a meeting in early February to get the, get this approved. And we're going to bid it out to all, well, it's not exactly anyone, it's pretty much anybody who's pre-qualified. So we should, last time we sent it out to five contractors and this, you know, and we got three bids back. We would hope that you would get more than that this time. And then our timing is a little bit better too, in terms of the time of year, as to when it might, you know, when it might get, you know, better pricing. But we don't know either because there certainly is going to be construction costs going up. I might, I might try to work with Marley a little bit on that because the bidding is, this goes through February fifth. We do have our, maybe the whole meeting February third, so it might be nice to get it done. So I'll see if I can.
These are just dates that she probably didn't know, or she didn't know our schedule.
No, so I will try to get her to move that up by a couple of days so we can get those back.
Okay, that's pretty much, last kick at that.
And then we want to go, just to talk briefly about the STEM, STEM schedule. You can see that we've had a number of interactive design meetings, we have another one this Friday, I believe. Kerry's gone. And then our next committee, will actually be our next meeting, we should have the design review of what we're going to be looking at. So we're trying to get that completed by the December second meeting. And look at our, kind of where we're going to go. But note that the timeline itself is really looking at bidding this out in March. The only, now that's as a conceptual thing, the only thing we have to be weary of is, this project is going to require outside funding, and we will have to be pursuing that in a little bit. That, that's kind of not on here, but that's something that we're going to have to be doing as well. Looking at, probably to make that work, we would be looking at a referendum similar to like the Aaron's Edition in April. But again, that would only be a referendum to allow us to borrow the money, not to, not to increase taxes. So it's not anything taxpayers want to bear.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, on to new business. Policies, Nick, you want to go over those?
Those are just three policies that are reviewed and updated for your review. They are quite extensively rewritten. So I'm not sure if there's any questions, I've reviewed them. The food service one, first of all, I've reviewed that with Judy Nicholas. I don't know if you want me to go through these in detail, or if there's any questions on these. We will, you can take them one at a time, or look to approve them as they are already.
Go ahead, go through, go through the food service management one.
You want me to discuss each piece of it, if you want to. Just look for approval as we.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You want to approve all three of them? Or you want to approve the three, we have taken separately. Okay. Motion being ordered then?
Yes.
You're making, you're making the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Holly, second by Leah. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. On to student dress.
All right, this is an issue every principal loves to deal with. But I think it's a pretty, the policy is written a little bit more generally because it's one page, I believe, with policies in each of the handbooks. Carry also the weighted policy, those are approved every year, those have a little bit more detail to them as we, as we implement them. So, but this really doesn't, I don't think this is any change to our past practice.
I need a motion to approve the first reading of the student dress course one through one. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Leah, second by Nicole. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. On to public participation at board meetings.
Okay, this actually, there is a, I don't think that the policy in and of itself is any big change from our past practice. Our practice has always kind of been, if somebody wants to talk and address the board, they certainly can do that. We haven't gotten into trying to restrict that. You certainly can, there's no requirement that you allow any public participation in board meetings, but we, but we always have. What seems to be more typical is that most policies on this issue limit comments to agenda items. We haven't done that. And I, that is not in the policy as I have it presented to you. It just pretty much lets, if somebody has a issue that they want to talk about, they can have a couple of minutes to do that. And I believe this is also written in a manner that we don't even define the amount of time somebody has. We just say that the board president can limit or determine that. So that, this also, so that's kind of the talking piece. The, the, let's see. The additional piece here, if you look at the part two of this, is that there is a, we haven't had anything in policy that allows a group to get on the agenda, or any policy that writes about how a group would get on the meeting agenda. This just says that if somebody wants to, they can give that to either me or Brian, the district administrator or board president, prior to the meeting, before we put the agenda out. And that's basically that Brian or I would have the right to determine if they get on the agenda. So, but that not everybody would just automatically get approved. So there's just a, there's a way that you, there's just some language on that. So, that's pretty much it.
So currently, they don't have to ask permission, or does?
Currently, they don't, there's no, there's no policy or no language on getting on the agenda, so.
Okay, so we're just beginning.
Basically, the, I think the way, I mean, you know, we've never really stifled, there's not massive outcry. We always, and the thing is, I think we've always taken the position of, if somebody wants to address the board, they can address the board. And so the, putting it on the agenda would allow us to have a discussion about it. Whereas if they just bring it up and say something that we have no clue on, then we wouldn't necessarily, but this would allow.
They'd have to ask for that in time.
They'd have to ask for it, yeah.
They'd have to ask for that for the board to discuss it, so it could be posted.
Yeah.
And then, then it could be discussed. But I think what typically could happen, if someone wanted to just address the board, for example, if there was like, say there was like ice on the sidewalks.
I thought, okay, I was going to say how, what a swell job they make the superintendent's doing.
Right, or something like that.
That would be more likely.
But you would let, I mean, someone, obviously the way we've always done this, is that someone could stand up and say that.
Yeah.
And then we don't necessarily talk about it. But that could, you know, that, depending upon what it is, would drive an agenda. You know, we would put it on the agenda.
Put salt on the sidewalk.
Right, or action would be taken that way. But what you're saying is this puts in place, someone could actually ask to be placed on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then they could expect a board discussion.
If, and we could determine if we think that's merit.
Merit, depending upon what it was.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of one eighty-seven. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Leah, second by Holly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. On to cleaning service contract.
All right, we got some quotes on the, just taking a look at our cleaning service. There are, this is, this is an hourly fee, this isn't what actually people get paid. You pay this hourly fee because they actually do some inspecting of people, they train their people, and they have, and subs are included, so if somebody's gone and they have to get a sub, it's included in this fee. So this isn't exactly what they, this is now what people make per hour. This is just what they, these companies charge per hour for cleaning services. Currently, we are paying sixteen ninety-five, and we're using that Middle Cleaning Solutions. We got some quotes, and what we are recommending is that we go with the first group, Building Services, for their fee. It's a bit higher, but we, Building Services does about thirty, I want to say, twenty, I can't remember, twenty, somewhere in there. A lot, a couple dozen anyways, schools in the area, and they seem to have more familiarity with school. Of, a, a, a lot, a couple dozen anyways, schools in the area, and they seem to have more familiarity with school. And, um, Cleaning Solution doesn't do any schools, and so we just think it would be a better switch to go to Building Services Group.
You're currently using the second one?
Yes.
So, what you just said is, if they're doing our school, they're doing the school, you're just-
They're just doing, that's it, though.
We're the only school they're doing.
They're doing the school, yeah. They might have one other one, I, I might, I might not be right on that, but they don't do anywhere near the building services.
So current, uh, current employees of that group here may or may not be employed here.
Correct.
Meaning if they left that position and got hired by that company, they could continue to work here?
Yeah.
Possibly.
Possibly.
But you don't-
There's been a lot of turnover lately, though, so-
I can see why.
Make a motion to approve the Building Services Group, studio contract.
My second.
A motion by Leah, second by Nicole. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Onto, next time for administrative reports. Take it away, Deb.
Um, I do want to just mention that Karen Kerber of Kerber and Rowland, who's present at the next board meeting, to discuss the two thousand fourteen, or June thirty of two thousand fourteen fiscal report. And I also wanted to just comment that we're trying to be a little bit proactive here in, in managing our fuel costs for this year. Um, we did start, um, working with a little bit more closely our continuing, continuing energy representative back in September, to try and lock in some fuel pricing here, so that we're not caught, um, as many were caught last year, you know, paying the higher fuel costs. So, we do have, um, the December through March anticipated fuel needs, about eighty percent of those needs contracted in, at a price averaging around four hundred, four dollars and fifty-six cents a depper therm. Um, I feel that's a, a good price. Um, we did come in under, just over budget last year. Um, but I think we're in a good position this year to, um, stay within that, in that target range. So, for example, just to give you an idea, last year we budgeted ninety thousand dollars for fuel. We actually spent ninety-eight thousand dollars, so given the, the winter and the fuel pricing last year, we did pretty well in that regard. So, hoping to do that same thing this year as well, so.
Okay, are there any questions for Deb? Hearing none, let's go down to Pete.
Uh, just a couple of things to highlight, been going on at our school. We finished the, uh, musical, uh, this past weekend. Attendance was outstanding, had about, uh, sixty kids involved, and, uh, I think it's just a awesome, multifaceted educational experience. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into that, and, uh, just wanted to congratulate or recognize, uh, Mrs. Rakich and Mr. Wagner in that. Uh, we had a great Veterans Day, uh, program last week, Tuesday. Um, our students and staff also, the speaker was a, a representative of the Honor Flight of Appleton. We made a donation of, uh, five hundred dollars to, for our students and staff, uh, to try to, uh, help pay the cost of one veteran to go on an Honor Flight hopefully next summer. And then we had, uh, about a half a dozen students go to the Ethics and Government Seminar last week in Green Bay, with some schools, a lot of business people were there. It was a good experience for our kids to, uh, associate with, uh, some business people, as well as some government officials in that experience, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Pete? Hearing none, Bonnie.
Um, I just wanted to highlight, um, again, a Veterans Day program in our school. The sixth grade teachers organize, uh, Bring a Veteran to School Day. And seven students brought veterans, whether it was their father, or their grandfather, or a friend, or a bus driver. Um, and it's just a really great experience. Some kids get to hear from different veterans that fought in a war, and some who didn't fight in a war, but served during peaceful times. So, that was a cool thing. Um, and the other thing is, elementary, um, fourth, eighth, and tenth graders actually just got done taking the Science and Social Studies WKCE. Um, so that puts off our state testing until spring, when third through eleven will again be testing. Um, Smarter Balance, um, in Wisconsin has, um, there's been a name change. Wisconsin decided to call it the Badger Exam. Um, so, you'll hear me referring to it as Badger Exam instead of Smarter Balance from now on.
The Badger Thirty-Eight, I like that, it makes it sound like a, some cold word.
Eighties rock band?
Yeah.
It's three through eight, that's what Badger Three Through Eight is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like Badger Thirty-Eight, I love that.
Okay, okay, we'll leave it at that. Um, okay, somebody, somebody had a different idea there. I, I thought the Smarter Balance was, okay, that's, they do that.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully everybody got a chance to look at Kerry's. Is there something you'd like to comment about Kerry's?
About Kerry's? Um, I don't think so, no.
Okay, well then, let's move on to yours, then.
Only thing I would notice about Kerry's is that we did start a Veterans Day program in the elementary school this year, for the first time. Um, and that was, um, we had not had that, but they, the ele- elementary kids were in elementary gym, and that was a pretty, pretty awesome program too. Something like that, I would, um, I'll slide into mine here. Um, just a few political things here. Uh, note that kind of the direction we have, and some of the concerns we had. I think the, um, that PK through twelve pathway to world-class student success is kind of the, um, education agenda that, um, we as educators are trying to advance, to say, these are the things that matter to make schools better. Um, this is what we need, and you can, I'm not gonna go through each one of those with you, but you can see that it, it focuses on some specific things that, um, get all kids ready to learn, and to make sure that all kids are learning. And I think the emphasis on all kids, not just all parochial kids, and not just all, uh, and not just all kids who have a legislator that can advocate it for them, it's, it's all kids. And, um, I, I think that what we're trying to do is look at this as being proactive instead of reactive. Um, uh, the current crop of, um, people that are running our state government seem to be focused on that education is best reformed by getting rid of the common core and adding vouchers. And I think our, if you look at the voucher argument and where the staunchest advocates would like it to go, um, basically that would involve putting a billion dollars, one billion dollars, into parochial schools that are already functioning without state government. And we just feel like there's probably a better way to spend a billion dollars than funding something that's already being funded. And so we're trying to spell that out specifically, what that is, um, what it takes to get all kids ready to learn, and to make sure that they, that they do learn. So, um, a little bit on, heavy on the politics there. Um, I also wanna just do a, kind of a little bit of a, of a upgrade, not upgrade, but I want us to, I guess I'd like us as a board to focus on education issues. We've spent a lot of time talking about, uh-
Buildings.
Too many sheets with McMahon's name on it, and, um, I think it's time. So what I'd like us to do is, I've got a, I want, we've done a book study before, so, um, I would like us to take a look at, and this relates directly to a policy that the board, um, this book is called On Your Mark by Thomas Guskay. And I got one for each of you, early present. Um, I'll try to read it and chop it in at the same time. So, um, I'd like us, we just, there's eight chapters in here, and so, um, I'd like us just to cover this at our community of the home meetings, and to take about a chapter or two per, um, per, per, uh, for community of the home meeting. And, um, I think this would give us some good, this is only about a hundred pages long, so it's not like it's the longest book you've ever read. Um, so I'll send out a note on it, but just to take a look at this for our next, for our next community of the home meeting, December the second, I believe. I'll send Kevin. Bonnie, I don't think I gave you, do you have a copy of this?
No.
I gave you a copy, I got it. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay. Okay, let me get back to my mark here. There are any questions for Nick? Let's go on to scheduled meetings, make note of those.
Just note that the Board of Ed meeting is the night of the elementary concert, but there should be enough time to get everybody back here on the fifteenth.
Isn't it, uh, on the fifteenth? Is that the one that usually is, uh, we had a conflict with the high school?
We've had, yeah, but it's not, this year it's the elementary concert, and it starts at, it should be, there should be enough time to get here after the, they kind of placed it so that it would work.
Okay. And, okay.
That should be pretty much-
When I think about it, at the December meeting, I don't know.
When's the registration date?
I don't know, I didn't even look, it's only November.
Uh, so we should just be thinking about the state, that's, that's-
State convention is on the twenty, twenty-first through twenty-third.
Yeah, be thinking of that, so we can accept that.
Okay, that's pretty much the valuation of the meeting. Very fast.
People point out that we pay for it on other meetings this last, so, we've earned it, right?
Right, um, I would entertain a motion to, uh, during the meeting. Okay, motion by Leah, second by Holly. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, meaning each other.